All right. Good evening and like our afternoon so far, I'd like to call this meeting of the Admiral County Planning Commission to order. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in this hybrid meeting are posted on the Admiral County website, on the Planning Commission homepage, and on the Admiral County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, which comments from the public will be received. And also, I'd like to note that our council, Andy Herrick, is actually participating online today. It's not actually required for him to be physically seated with us legally, so he has a family issue, so he is online. So I don't know if we, have you guys made sure that he is in the room?
Present, thank you.
Okay.
We have.
You got him. Okay, wonderful. All right, so this first item is actually a work session. So we will not be taking public comments during this session. And then we will have a recess at five o'clock and then begin again at six. So our first item on the agenda for our work session, or the only item actually, is CPA 2021-00002, Comprehensive Plan Growth Management Options and Themes. So may we have the staff information, please? Thanks for all the great advanced materials.
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tori Kennalopoulos. I'm a senior planner in the Albemarle County Planning Division. And I'm joined today by Vlad Gavrilovik, principal at EPR. And we will both be presenting on growth management options and themes for this comprehensive plan update work session. Today, we will be covering a briefing on the AC44 comp plan update process, summarizing potential options for growth management, and discussing potential common themes to build a new vision for growth and resilience, which we anticipate bringing to the Planning Commission at a September work session. We'll start off with an overview of the AC44 process and provide additional detail on where we are in Phase One. We will share an update on the next steps for the land use build out analysis and provide an overview of some potential growth management options and public input to date on those options and share what we've heard and potential common themes based on this public input. We'll wrap up with an overview of next steps in Phase One and then have time for the Planning Commission discussion and questions on potential common themes. We're currently in Phase One, Plan for Growth, where we are reviewing and evaluating the current growth management policy using lenses of equity, climate action, and capacity projections. At the end of Phase One, we intend to have a draft vision for growth and resilience, which will be used to inform the next phase where we will develop a policy framework based on that vision. This is a more detailed overview of Phase One, and the three blue circles indicate the three steps of public engagement. In Step One, we shared a local history of planning for growth, an overview of the current growth management policy, and initial findings from the land use build out analysis. We asked for community input on the current policy, what people's lived experiences have been, and what we should prioritize when reviewing the policy. We held pop-ups and had an online survey to gather this feedback. In Step Two, we developed seven growth management options to consider while reviewing the current policy, which were shared with the community to consider and provide input on. We held open houses and had an online survey with information for each option on what the current comp plan says, why we might consider the option, and what potential action steps could follow if we pursued the option. Based on the feedback received to date, we have drafted potential common themes. In Step Three, we will continue to refine and develop these common themes and use them to draft a vision for growth and resilience. We are planning to have in-person and virtual roundtables and online opportunities in Step Three. Then we would come back to you all in September after the public engagement to discuss the draft vision, which would then go to the board in October. We will revisit the growth management options and use the vision to inform a policy framework for the plan. We wanted to pause and see if you all have any questions so far, or if you'd prefer us to keep going with the presentation.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
At what, what point in this process will we have the opportunity to discuss the rural area in depth? I feel there's a lot of opportunities there, and I haven't seen a real clear phase where we get to do that.
Sure. So in Phase Two, we'll start to get into what we're calling the main topics for the comp plan, which would we, would identify as we scope that phase. So that could include transportation, economic development, land use, and rural area planning. So Phase Two is when I would anticipate us getting into more detail for those types of topics.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good question.
Public involvement, the survey responses, the pop-ups, all of those, are you, do you feel, this is kind of a, I don't mean it to be loaded, but do you feel like you've had adequate public input, or was, was it at the level you expected, or, or not?
It's a good question. I think for the online survey, the second one, that maybe is the highest number of responses we've ever gotten for a survey. I think for the in-person ones, it's been pretty good participation, but it has varied a lot. We've definitely had more success at pop-ups where there's already been another event going on. But we're definitely continuing to see where we get the most feedback and see where else we can show up.
Great. Thanks.
So, so I'd like to follow up on that, not as a, not as a, not as a finger wagging, but as a, as an opportunity to sort of ensure that we have the kind, that we, at the end of this process, have the, the body of, the body of responses that shows that this has been a full, a full, or, or an attempt to be an engagement with the community. Because if I looked at it, if I, according, according to the second bit where we had like 400, we're like in the 450, 450, 60 area as far as responses, while that's, well, compared to what we've done before, well, that's good. Given that we're a place of 112,000 people, I would hope that we would come at least close to, you know, I would like 10%, but I don't think that's gonna happen. So I've been trying to sit comfortably with around 5%. Because I think otherwise, it feels like, it will feel like the survey results are being lifted up by people who always have the time to engage in these kinds of activities. And I will just say, if people haven't seen it, I said the, the county, it's not the welfare thing, it's the county atmosphere survey, is that what it's called? Somebody help me out here. It's, it's the atmosphere. It's, 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 the county does a survey that sort of looks at how, how, you can tell me.
I, I don't know the name of that one off the top of my head, but I know what you're speaking about.
We all know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I will say is when I went and I did a deep dive on the last one that came out, and when I looked at the demographic, the demographics really trend white, upper class, or middle upper class, and extremely well, and extremely well educated. Let me say again.
You don't need to.
Okay, thank you.
This is my, been my experience.
Okay. And so, and so, and as, and, and, and not, I mean, they are, the opinions which were offered are opinions which make sense, given that profile of individual who's responding. But what I'm, what I'm, what I'm nervous about is that, that those responses then become the drivers for lots of decisions that, that I think probably it would be good if we had some more balance. So, while not finger wagging, I'm saying that it probably would be better to have some additional, some additional responses from a more pluralistic group of our citizens.
Oh, I will just note that, for the record, I do believe we, yeah, we could probably come up with some more creative ideas to get different types of people to respond. And maybe that, I think it does warrant a longer conversation than right now, as we're in, just in a short work session. But the, the staff did actually request from the board for a very robust community engagement campaign, and they were rejected. So I, I just want to say they're doing the best they can with the resources that the Board of Supervisors felt prudent to provide.
That's why I wasn't finger wagging.
Right, that's why your figure was like.
Yeah, I wasn't finger wagging.
All right. Well, I just, you know, because I, I think staff definitely supports what you just said and, you know, had hoped to have the resources, because it's kind of like the, the, the less likely people are to come, it the harder and more expensive it is to get to them. So it, it isn't like a one-to-one kind of thing, like let's get another 50 people or something, and that's exactly the same cost as the first 50. Do you guys want to add to that?
I was, I was just gonna say, I think another factor that will, will increase participation as we move through this process over the next couple of years is, as Commissioner Murray pointed out, people are excited to get into specific topics, into the details of this plan. At this point, we're still at such a high level, trying to figure out which those avenues we're gonna go down, which ideas we want to explore, and what are those topics that we want to dive into. Once those topics start to resonate, people are gonna want to get involved. I think if they, you know, if they have a a particular interest in transportation, or, you know, in environmental protection, they'll come out for those. And we just aren't at that spot yet, but I think you'll see participation will increase as we, as we open up those opportunities.
Yes, okay, keep going.
And we wanted to provide a brief update on the land use build out analysis, which we are working with the consultant Kim Lee Horn to finalize. We have been gathering additional data and analysis based on what we heard at the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors work sessions, and continuing to compile and analyze the non-residential pipeline, analyze recent residential build out and approval trends, and coordinate with the Economic Development Office on site readiness and site selection factors for non-residential uses. So we have a few key takeaways so far, which include, in mixed-use developments, the residential component tends to build out first, and the non-residential component may not build out until years later. When factoring in site readiness and site selection criteria, there appears to be sufficient capacity for commercial and retail uses, but much less currently available for office and industrial uses. Projects with the land use designation of urban density residential are not being approved at the higher end of recommended density ranges, with recent rezoning approvals averaging seventeen and a half units per acre for net density. And many buy right projects are developing at 30 to 50% of the density recommended in the comp plan. And now I'm going to turn it over to Vlad to talk about the growth management options.
Thanks, Tori. Afternoon, members of the commission. Vlad Gavrilovik, principal with EPR PC in Charlottesville. Honored to be selected as the part of the consultant team with a group of specialists and interdisciplinary team here to help the county. And as Tori said, I want to walk you through some of the growth management options. And first of all, to say that these were developed by the staff and the consultants after the first round of public input. They're not intended as picking one, as the winner or the loser, they're intended to initiate discussion. You'll see in, later in the presentation, that we've taken the input on these and, and general input to develop some common themes. So first of all, starting with what you all know very well, I'm sure, the current growth management policy. This is from the 2015 Conference of Plan, and of course, it, it focuses on these two elements, the rural area, where the, the primarily agricultural forestry resources, et cetera, are to be located in the development areas, which are areas where we, we look for facilities and services, utilities, future growth, density and high quality design. So where and how, I guess, next slide, why and how we are reviewing the current policies. As you know, the board initiated a resolution, Support of Equitable Inclusive Community, as, in 2019, as resolution. They also identified climate action as a top priority, adopted the Climate Action Plan. So it's these two lenses, along with this directive, to review the current growth management policy in relation to the projections for growth. Really, these three initiatives, equity, climate action, and accommodating growth is how we're reviewing the growth management policy. And then we're doing this, of course, through a broad public input process, always could do better. But we are doing a variety of public input activities in each phase. There's working groups, there's a total of six working groups that will be working through each phase of this. The land use build out analysis, of course, to get at growth projections, and really reviewing all these policy options, and then coming up with common themes to ultimately build, as Tori said, a vision for growth and resilience, kind of as the, the capstone to this phase of the project. Next slide. Of course, we're gonna continue to work with the community and take public input and feedback. And some of the feedback, as you'll see, has been on which of these options are better for supporting climate action, equity, and accommodating growth. And we want to build on the language in the current Conference of Plan, as well as best practices and, and current planning. So these options, which I'm sure you've had an opportunity to study. But again, just to highlight that these are a range of policy options. We don't anticipate saying that one of these is the future direction for growth management, but they have been useful to look at kind of a, a range of directions for the county that we could take elements from to build this new vision, particularly in the light of public comment on these. So I'll go through these fairly quickly, but also focus on what the public survey said about these options. So next slide. First one, of course, is looking at applying more density and more infill development within the existing development areas, and retaining and enhancing green infrastructure. And you can see the survey responses here, so the green and the yellow are yes or somewhat through these three lenses. Out of over 400 responses, these, this particular policy option supported climate action equity and projected growth, in the public's opinion, fairly well. Over 300 or so supported somewhat or yes. So that's more density infill in the development areas. Next, next option was looking in the development areas to adjust the densities and reduce the maximum densities to more closely align with what people have actually been building at. As, as Tori said, they're closer to building out at 17 or so units per acre rather than the 34 max in some of these development areas. When we ask people which of these support these different initiatives, you can see that there was a fairly even balance between people who felt that they supported climate action equity and projected growth versus people who felt that they didn't support them. A little more no support on the climate action than, of course, on the projected growth. The third option is looking at new criteria to identify when, where, and how development areas should be expanded. So this is looking at an expansion of the development areas. And as you might expect, this had a fairly strong response that it would support projected growth. A lot of yeses or somewhats, fairly balanced on supporting equity, a little more to the yes than the no, and a little more to the no that it would support climate action. But interesting in, in all these, how there isn't like a strong support on one side or the other. I think people realize that these are complex policy issues, there's a lot of nuance to them. The next option was opportunities for non-residential development around the interchanges of I-64 to support job growth and economic development. You can see on this one, a few more no's on supporting climate action than equity, and a fairly strong yes or somewhat that accommodates projected growth. Option five was the possibility of rural villages, where you would promote small-scale commercial and service uses to nearby rural area residents. This option had fairly strong yes and somewhat on all three areas, climate action, equity, and projected growth. A little higher actually on equity than the other two, but that's an interesting policy option that seems to have be filling the, the support or the goal for all three areas. Number six was looking at current service provisions and seeing if adjustments are needed to ensure equitable distribution of services, particularly health and safety services in both the rural areas and development areas. So looking at schools, fire, safety, health, can they be more well distributed so people have to travel less to get to these services? And you can see here that for equity, this one was seen as a pretty strong yes or somewhat. Probably 340 or so supporting equity. For climate action, again, fairly good support for yes or somewhat, and for accommodating projected growth. So this one, six and five, the one before, were fairly good at supporting all three objectives from the public standpoint. And then finally, exploring opportunities to promote forest retention, regenerative land uses in the rural area to support climate action goals. As you might expect, really strong yes, that this supports climate action. A little weaker yes, so that it supports equity, and not so much feeling that it supports the accommodation of projected growth. So these were, again, we thought a very useful way to get the public to discuss and weigh how, given the board's initiatives, how different ways of approaching growth management could support these different initiatives. I think Tori's gonna present to you on the next slide, not only what we heard in this round, which was looking at these policy options, but what we heard in the previous round, which is more broadly about growth management.
Thank you, Vlad. As we showed earlier in the presentation, these are the steps for Phase One. And in the following slides, we'll share an overview of the feedback we heard during Steps One and Two, which we used to draft the potential common themes. And the feedback on Step One was focused on the current policy, and the feedback on Step Two was focused on generating ideas for meeting those goals. In Step One, we heard that the current growth management policy has been successful at protecting natural resources and agricultural and forestry uses. We also heard that challenges under the current policy include housing affordability, the need for more transportation options besides driving, and the need for infrastructure concurrent with growth. The top three priorities for updating the policy were protection of natural resources, infrastructure and utilities planning, and housing type variety and affordability. Based on the growth management survey results in Step Two, we heard that the three options that best support climate action were regenerative land uses in the rural area, rural villages, and distribution of service provision. The three options that best support equity were service provision, rural villages, and providing more density and infill in the development areas with green infrastructure. And for accommodating growth, the three options were rural villages, non-residential development at interchanges, and service provision. And you may note that Options Five and Six were the only ones that made it onto all three lists from the survey. We also asked the community which options we should continue to explore, and included an opportunity to provide other options for us to consider. Regenerative land uses in the rural area, rural villages, and opportunities for density and infill in the development areas received the most support. And we wanted to note that the spread between the top and bottom options is not wide, and all options had some support for continuing exploration. Based on the text responses in the survey, some respondents were interested in exploring certain options, but noted that it was dependent on how those options were implemented. And these are some of the other options to continue to explore that we heard, which we've attempted to summarize here, and include alternative modes of transportation, more recreational opportunities, keeping the current growth management policy the same and keeping the status quo, strategies for affordable housing, more replacement and enhancement of the tree canopy, more mixed-use development, job training opportunities, and encouraging career ladder jobs. And then we also wanted to note that we received a significant number of emails and several survey responses expressing support for the Three Notch Trail. Along with this feedback on which options to explore and which seem to best meet our goals, we have also received significant open-ended comments in both Steps One and Two and at our working group meetings. This slide summarizes the support and concern for some of the options. We are hearing that the growth management policy has increased the cost of housing by restricting land area available for development, that we are not getting enough density within the development areas to support local housing needs, and that we should expand the development areas to allow more housing. We are also hearing that there has been too much growth in density within the development areas, that density should be reduced, and that infrastructure has not kept up with growth. We are hearing both that density should be concentrated to reduce sprawl and support climate action, and also that new development removes tree canopy. For the rural villages, we are hearing concern that the rural villages could have the unintended effect of encouraging additional growth, but also that they could reduce distances residents need to drive for some goods and services. For non-residential development at I-64 interchanges, we are hearing that development at interchanges could make use of existing infrastructure and support new business opportunities, but also that it could negatively impact the surrounding area with additional noise and traffic. And now I'm gonna turn it back over to Vlad to talk about the potential common themes based on this feedback.
Thanks, Tori. Almost done, and look forward to hearing your discussion. So the, the challenge, as you might well imagine, is what, what to do with this very robust public input. Reading through the comments, there really was a lot of intelligent comment. A lot of people took this very seriously. And you have this polarity of, of input, to some extent, what, what Tori went through of wanting, you know, both one thing and its opposite. And remembering that our process chart shows that the end result of this phase is not picking one of those options, but it's coming up with this new vision for growth and resilience. So in light of that, we took the common themes from what we heard, both on the seven options and on the input that was open-ended, that people just wrote in, and the input on the first phase. And looking at what are things that are common elements, what are people generally showing agreement on? We anticipate using these themes to, for the next round of public input. So rather than going back to the development options or the growth management options using these common themes that, that seem to have some traction and people's agreement. However, we don't want to lose the seven kind of options. We anticipate coming back to those in Phase Two and looking at, in light of this vision, how do they each perform, and what elements can we take from them? So the, the, just briefly to take away some things that we heard that people seem to be in agreement on was a focus on action. The broad policy directions from the Board of Climate Action and Equity need to be translated into concrete actions. Is equity more about affordable housing? Is climate action more about, you know, regenerative uses, those types of things? General support for affordable housing, that address the county's high cost of living, high cost of housing. The importance of how we grow, so the design quality of how we grow, and really a focus on conservation-based design in, in guidelines and standards. And then a multimodal transportation focus, alternatives to the 80% or so of the county that use single occupancy vehicles to get around. So not only active transportation like bike and ped, but also transit options seems to get a lot of support. And then the idea that infrastructure needs to keep pace with growth, particularly on schools, we had a, heard a lot of comments, so growing sustainably. Very interesting idea of strategic density. So looking at not one size fits all, but looking in the development areas at where it makes sense to increase the development density, where you might have available infrastructure services, good access, and less kind of issues with adjacent low-density development versus areas where it may make sense to reduce the development density in accord with what you've been seeing typically is coming in, rather than the maximum density in the comprehensive plan. And then finally, greening the development areas. As we grow, make sure that we're adding green infrastructure and parks to them. So these are the seven ones. We'd love to hear your thoughts on this. There's, we, we're gonna pause for questions, but there's really only two or three more slides, so we could just go through next steps and then turn it back to you, whatever you prefer.
Well, I, I think we should have some conversation before we go to the next steps.
Sounds good.
That's all right. We'd like, how, how would you like to go about this? Do you want to go through these one through these common threads? Or do you want to go back to the, the different options and discuss them? Well, I got 30 minutes. Or we could just pick the things that we think are most important to communicate to our consultants at this time. I mean, I, I definitely have some thoughts, and I know you do too. Which, which, which would be most helpful for you, for us to go through the potential common themes or to go back to the original?
There, if you want to go to the slide that is like questions for you.
Yeah.
This would be most helpful. I mean, this is two things. Basically, we, we want to use this in the next round of engagement. Are they getting us in the right direction? And do they get us to this vision for growth and resilience, and is anything missing?
Okay, well, we'd like to start. I don't have a good process for this. I mean, I don't think anyone would disagree on the importance of climate action equity. And that we all probably agree they need to be translated to common actions, concrete actions. And a lot of these things are linked together, you know, for example, you know, greening development areas is obviously related to climate action. And, and also equity, since people should be able to walk to a park or trail or a healthy environment near to where they live and not have to get in the car and drive a really long way to find something green. And so, and providing access to services in the rural areas is also important for climate action, because if everyone has to drive all the way to Charlottesville for every single need, then we're just driving all over the county. because if everyone has to drive all the way to Charlottesville for every single need, then we're just driving all over the county. The affordable housing is also a tricky one because we are trying hard to provide affordable housing in the growth area. But the reality is that most of the affordable housing in our county is in the rural area. But if you live way out in the rural area, as I do, and some of you, you then don't have access to the services, you know. And so it it, you know, we, that's where we get into that equity of service provision because we can't just say to people, we're providing all of the resources in the development area, and that's so efficient. And yet, we don't have the affordability for all of you to just choose to live in the development area. So that's where that, that's where it becomes sort of unfair. And I've seen steps in the county trying to, has actually started to shift a bit more towards understanding that. For the the best example that comes to my mind is the recycling center that's going to be now. I don't have to drive all, I don't, I'm like a recycling center in my house. I collect all this stuff for a month, and then I look like a trash truck driving up twenty-nine to get all the way to town or wait, you know, fifty-minute drive each way. So I mean, that's too, and I'm and I'm ruining the climate while I'm driving my recycling. You know, so the fact that we've now provided something in Southern Alamo, and we're going to look for other places in the county to do that is to me a a softening of that notion that services only go in the the developed area. So that's sort of my broad brush kind of look at this. I think some of the green infrastructure stuff and parks and green systems, one of our challenges, and this is the last thing I'll say. Just thought I'd kind of throw some things out here to start off. You know, when, if we talk about stormwater management, green infrastructure for a moment, that's sort of constructed green infrastructure, we're seeing a lot less of that. Like we've talked about permeable pavements and bio swells, but developers are buying off-site credits. Why? Because they can. It's the cheapest option. So we could look at incentives and give density bonuses and other things for incorporating those structures. That has worked in other places. We did an ordinance for that in Charlottesville. So that that is something we can't just say, yeah, more more low-impact development, green infrastructure stuff. You know, we're going to have to do something to change the market for that. The park systems, green trails, tree canopy, all of that. Similarly, there's there's things that relate to codes, as Charles knows, are, we don't have decent codes for planting a tree that will ensure that it's alive ten years from now. We just don't. That's easily fixed in my mind. But something like parks and access, if we wait for the density to get to the point where it's like, wow, there's really a demand here, there is no land left to put that trail. Or if we didn't have a master plan for how we want all these greenways to connect, then the developers don't know where they should be putting that trail spur. You know, Charlottesville's been very successful because when they they did the, of course, they had the voluntary sort of urban ring of the trail, the Rivanna Trail going around the city, but one thing the city did is say, we'd like you to connect here and here and here and here. And so a number of connections were proffered or offered, because developers like, great, that's where you want the connection. Thank you for telling me. But if we wait for, you know, we keep seeing like this trail. Here, here's an eight-foot-wide path to nowhere in front of this development. Here's another one. We had a development come for us recently in the past month where the developer was saying, gee, it would be great if the adjoining development donated land for us to continue this trail. And I I saw, I saw maybe what a five percent chance that adjacent development was going to donate land to make that trail work. So the county itself is going to have to do a lot more of the intensive planning and then actually spending the taxpayers' dollars to get these things in place. Because our model, I think we can say this, I'll just make a broad statement. Our model of hoping that through proffers and putting things in the comp plan of what we wish we had is not getting us the parks, the trails, the the amenities, the bike transportation, the things that we need to the degree that we need it. So that's, I guess that's sort of where I come down.
Proactive rather than reactive, yep.
I don't want to hog. So who would like to go next?
Yes, I mean, I think one of the important things, we talked about, you know, equity with the rural area, as a rural area resident myself as well. I think it's important to have a concept of do no harm in the rural area and not lose the services that we have. A, to make one example of that, we don't get sidewalks proffered in the rural area because we don't have rezonings in the rural area. We don't get bike trails because, once again, we don't have rezonings. The only safe places to to run or bike tend to be gravel roads. We know which gravel roads tend to be the most frequently used by runners and cyclists, but we keep paving them. So we have this tendency to have a degradation of the services that rural people use. And yet, we can't get new services that are corollary with what we have in the growth area. So that seems to be a big problem. A great example, Route seventy-six, we have a national bike route that goes through our county. It's a, it's an embarrassment, honestly. I mean, anyone on that bike route is risking their life. My daughter asks me, you know, hey, you know, can we run to, we're at, you know, twelve miles now. Can we, can we run for our house to Grozay? And, you know, that's a bike route. We should be able to do that, right? I tell her, no, we would die. So that's a big problem that I see with this. I think, you know, also, you're absolutely right about the challenges with greening the development areas and parks. We have currently a sort of develop-to-protect model right now, where we have a big green area next to the Rivanna River or some other area we want to conserve. And to get some green space proffered along that river, we have to clear all the trees, or at least we have to clear seventy-five percent of the trees to get, you know, twenty-five percent of a little strip, you know, along the river. That seems counterintuitive. Some other localities have implemented urban concepts of transfer of rights so that you can actually protect that whole area as opposed to having to develop part of it to just to protect the sliver of this land. So I think we need some more creativity in how we look at a lot of these issues. We have programs that could be applied for, also, like, we have an ACAP program currently, but you can't use ACAP for properties that are under development. So it'd be great if we had, as you said, incentive programs where we could actually say, hey, would, can we give you a little bit of extra funding to put a green roof on that building? That would be fantastic. Or convert that into a biofilter instead of, you know, a retention basin.
Like to go next. You want to do rock, paper, scissors or just?
As far as the the common themes, the potential common themes are concerned, I'm actually supportive of them. What I, what I do see, and I think you will hear, not only in a small group, but in the in the survey, and then some of the comments that you hear from my colleagues up here, is this this idea of how do you balance and how do you strike sort of an equitable way forward with all these issues? And so I'm going to push something out here that's not here. But but there there's a piece that's going to happen ten years from now when we redistrict, go through another redistricting, okay? And if we do not increase the development area, Samuel Miller will end up at a point in the near future of being the largest landmass district in Alamo County. And so from an equity standpoint, one has to say, is that where we want to go as a county? That we have this one very large landmass that's called Samuel Miller? What will the people from Whitehall feel be since they're one of the boundaries? What will the people from Jackshure, the the district that I that I represented this in that in a titular way? What will they feel? But more importantly, what does that mean for the county when we, when we adhere to a no shape, a no reshaping of our development boundaries? And yet, this is one of the situation, and we have no control over that. Because the decision about equally balanced districts does not sit here. It sits down Route sixty-four. And so it will happen one way or the other. It happened because we are thoughtful enough on the front end of it, or we are not, and then we have to react on the back end of that. And so that's a piece that's an unintended consequence of our land use. And so while there are the obvious pieces here, what I would ask as we move forward is that we actually look at some of the secondary and tertiary issues that are not apparent. I live contiguous, next to a a development area. I actually happen to live in the rural area, which is may not be apparent if anyone looks at my address. And in order to get to, and we have two parks in the development area. We have one in Corrie's area, and we have one in mine. And the one in mine is never going to be a recreational park. I would challenge anyone to come to the Charlotte Humphreys Park and tell me that we don't have, do not have a density of trees that rivals anything in the rural area, rivals anything in the rural area. But I can't get a number of kids there to walk there. Okay, I can't get the other places close to us as Ivory Nature, Ivy, Ivy Creek, Ivy Creek nature area, which is contiguous to our property. I can't get a young person there. And while you talk about it, they have gravel roads, I can't get a person there on a gravel road or a non-gravel road. I just can't get a person there. And so as we talk about, and we have plenty of parks, I'm sure I'll be lambasted for this. There are plenty of formal green spaces in the rural part of our county. There's plenty of them. I'm not saying there's too many. I'm just saying there's plenty of them. And yet, when we talk about the greening of our county, we rarely talk about the greening of our county with the people who have the least amount of access to those resources. And so I'm, while I will be terse in my statement and saying I don't care about another park in the rural part of the county, because I will say, I want connectivity to the green spaces that are closer in, and I want some areas that are sufficient as public spaces for young people and 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 their families to be able to go to.
And maybe Talani's point that they could actually get there on their bicycle.
You can't run to the end, you can't run to something that you don't have.
Yeah, or to the stormwater pond that's been designated as the park.
And so that's that's something that, this is fine for me. But there are secondary and tertiary issues here that will spring forth when you, when we sit together for like two or three hours together.
So thanks for the information and for the presentation. This was really helpful. I know that you all are looking to sort of narrow the the neck of the funnel, right? We're still pretty broad up at the top, and eventually we're going to get there. And so keeping that in mind, you know, to answer your question specifically, the common themes, I think this does strike most of the common themes. And, you know, I have to think sort of sub-theme to make sure that that's actually the case to your point. One thing that I think is sort of getting back to my original question about public participation. You know, I I would wonder how much the development community, how much economic development was involved in this in this conversation. And my first sort of go-to in looking at these is to try to prioritize them. And that's just where my brain goes, and I think that really depends on where you come from. Do you come from the development side? Do you come from the certain, you know, sustainability side and so on? So I think thinking through that and making sure that our foundation for this very broad area of focus, these themes, is stable enough and representative enough, if there's a way to do that, of all of the, you know, somewhat diverse input that you're going to get, and doesn't throw a bias in a certain area that's unintended, maybe just because people didn't involve, you know, weren't involved. I know that's probably challenging to do, but it's worth a try. The other thing is, and I know I'm preaching to the choir on this one, you know, as you think about the strategic density and you think about how important that is, I always, you know, my my thought goes to, what is the goal? You know, we need to be sort of driven by a goal, and what is that goal? Is our goal to fill in the blank, add more density to the development areas, expand the development area? Is it to bring economic development from other parts of the state or the the nation? What is it that's actually driving our desire to look at strategic density and sustainability and so on? I think everything that we're talking about, maybe back to this point about open space and sustainability, needs to somehow be linked to a master plan, right, eventually? And I know, again, we'll get there. But, you know, how does, for example, the capital plan for infrastructure, how does that inform development and how are they linked together? And not to throw RWSA in the mix, but it's just one that comes to mind, right? What is their capital plan and how does that support strategic density? How does it support sustainability, et cetera, et cetera? I think all of those need to be woven woven together. And then one other thing that I'll throw out there, and this sort of gets back to the very, probably third or fourth slide, I think, that you shared, and that was this issue of site readiness. And I think I don't have it, I mean, I could pull it up, but I think what I remember was that it was, forget how it was phrased, but basically site readiness applied primarily to, and then there were some specific uses.
Office and industrial compared to retail and commercial.
Yeah, exactly. So I think, you know, how are we defining site readiness in this county? I think there are a lot of different ways to do that. One is you actually have a ready site and you present it for economic development. And another is that, oh, well, there's a lot of room here to build that based on our master plan. But is it really ready? So I think just thinking through how that process then also builds on the strategic density approach. Thanks.
Like to go next.
Well, I can just start by apologizing for being late. Fortunately, I got tied up in my my day job.
We're glad you're here.
Had I made it. And and I'm glad I was here to hear some some of the commentary that I've heard so far. And I, so I, and I would agree with with what's been said in particular about the approach. I like your your comment. It's a funnel. Yeah, we're, you're, we're trying to work down. I guess my my reaction to it is, and and you've heard me say some of this before, particularly around affordable housing, is can we build in measurable, you know, opportunities? So like, how how do we know that some of these things are are meeting our intended purpose, right? What are things that we can measure? So as we're building these themes, let's build in some some ways of measuring success. You know, the, I think you can apply that to every single one of them, but I'll 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 harp on the affordable housing one again. How do we know that we're achieving the goal that was set with this theme? And can we think about some some ways to measure that success? And a lot of times we focus on the big picture, but we lose that that opportunity to say, and we know that we're going in the right direction if we're achieving A, B, C, and D.
Yeah, exactly.
So so I would encourage everyone to to think about that as well as we as we put this into motion.
I wholeheartedly agree. I like to have comprehensive plans that have measurable objectives, not just saying do more of stuff.
Because we have ten minutes left, so I'll take nine real quick. Don't joke it, don't joke it.
We started a bit late, so we'll actually go to five oh five.
Um, I I think this is certainly heading on the right track. The the one, there's two things that kind of jumped out at me. One was for action focus, where it highlights the climate action and equity. Almost feel that it should be woven through each one of those common themes, opposed to like a standing, a standalone one. It's just woven through. I mean, it's almost like a strategic plan in a sense. And then the second piece that we hadn't really talked much about was the strategic density. And I thought it was really, it was really interesting that one of the key takeaways, I just pulled it up, that the Urban Density Residential, which goes up to thirty-four units per acre. It said that, you know, most of those at the higher end don't get approved, but I think the number was seventeen point six. It's kind of the average. But I feel like the density is such a key portion in solving some of these other challenges. And so figuring out what that disconnect is in the community, because I think you also had a sheet in here that said, you know, we're hearing both, right? Don't like densely and we do like densely. So that's something we have to kind of wrestle to the ground, and I'm sure this is part of the final deliverable here. As much as is there an education sense in this process with the community as we start to step through this? Does that mean it's graphics or visuals? I'm not sure that answer is yet. But addressing it, because I think if we can get our arms and and embrace the strategic density portion, I think you start talking about design importance, or that could be a a major key to affordable housing, right? You know, mixed-use development, like I can live and work in that same area. So those are kind of the things that jumped out to me, so listen to this conversation.
Daniel, did you want to comment and then we can?
I mean, I agree.
I mean, I agree with you that it's just like as we, you know, there's a big momentum around E S G. Environmental, social governance and corporate reporting and financial disclosures and everything in the world I live in. That's not a standalone thing. It's should be woven throughout. Everything we do. And I agree with you very much that the climate action and equity should be cross cutting across these things. One note on affordable housing, I think it comes up and we we've had some discussion. I go back to, you know, I I can't remember. When Dr. Pethia came like two years ago or whatever, we talked about was like affordable, also accessible, you know, like we have aging population. Can they age in place? And so there there's a question there that it's affordable. And then what is the definition of affordability? Is it affordable that it's just in a monetary or can it house certain? Unit types? Now we talk about that, but it comes up over and over. It's like, oh, so so developers offer an affordable housing, but who can live there? It's. A shoebox, you know, like what what does that mean? And we we get that. And I think that's a great. Thing for. To help define, understand the KPIs. What you talked about with the key performance indicators are going to help us track this and know if on track. And then maybe augment a bit with accessibility would be if you ask what I think is missing there, you know, making sure that we're thinking about our aging population and can we age in place? And then I think. One of the things that strikes me and you kind of mentioned it with it is. We've always struggled with having that data and feedback of how well we're doing. We're making decisions on like what the land use land class and the thing, yeah, I live in Belvedere, right? It has a. Concept. I've been there for nearly ten years. Has a concept of having a. Centers, little center of community that's been vacant for ten years. Right? And they like, and and we've done a lot of approving of these like novel neighborhood model density developments and other things where they should have this little like. Retail or office building. I would really love to know how many of them are actually developed. That have been approved in the last two years. Because it's something we keep promoting and pushing, but is it actually? What? Is wanted, you know, or do we end up with unkept, unmaintained? Areas within a development that grow up big weeds. And are never actually developed because it's not what's what is the land use needed. So tho- those are the things that I I would say that. You know, it it's not here, but it's hard. We can do these. Type of things, but we've always struggled for the data to understand the decision and and go forward. And so. I'd love to, you know, see if there's a way to give. At least in this to start to set the standard for how we're going to collect, track, collect, you know, create data that we can reason over. Not just here, but in the future. So that those are some of the things that strike me. I think they are in the right direction. You ask specific questions. I do think they point us in the right direction. I think. We're going to struggle with. Reasoning over them because of the lack of data and 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 feedback that we have. You know, if we can start to find ways to augment that or supplement that, it will help us make better decisions move forward. Already talked about missing with accessibility and affordability piece. Talked about the, you know, ways that we can review the. I guess it's, I don't know if it's design importance. I think that's pretty much all. I have a lot of comments there, but. Make that summarize.
There's a lot to unpack there, but I'll just say, and we don't have time in these little mini work sessions, but I'll just say that it struck me that would be almost useful to make a list of. Some of these planning approaches like. Centers, you know, the we see the C on the map and I go, we got to stick a center in there and and multiple developers come to say, yeah, but like. Three blocks away, there is a center, the grocery store and offices and a veterinarian. And why would we like make another? Fake one and here that. Yeah. So I think we need to examine some of these sort of. Things that we've been promoting. You know, and the neighborhood model and, you know, we've had some developments south of. Town that are like, well, we don't really have a model, so we'll just adopt that one that was for twenty places twenty nine and twenty nine north and. Try to smoosh that in there. So there there's a number of those kind of things in that bucket that we could. Affordable housing, you know, is it? Maybe it would be affordable housing if you had affordable transportation to get you from your affordable house to to the services that you need. So I think there's a whole list of those that we could actually spend some more time on for sure.
And I don't want to, I don't want to like. Take it off of the focus of the conversation, but coming back to the original point of like, I saw all these statistics and. Everybody knows I'm a data person, so I see all these surveys and 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 everything. I couldn't really figure out like. It kind of comes back to says like, how representative is the population? Like, it doesn't matter if we have four hundred, if we believe that four hundred, that sample is representative of. The population we're trying to measure. So giving a sense of like how close. And what is the gaps in the sample that we have? We don't need five. We don't necessarily need five percent. We could have small samples if we have confidence that sample is representative of the population statistically.
Well, this is a qualitative sample, not a quantitative sample. It's not a representative sample. Wasn't designed that way.
Right. Could I just, could I just so 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 one of the things I think we're not just us, but I think our supervisors in the community are going to have to deal with here. So a number of the things that we through options one through seven. Are really we're 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 sort of waiting for the market to get there. And the comp plan is that sort of gentle hand on the market, hope hoping and guiding it to some places. And so some of this though maybe, and I'm not in a, I'm not there yet. But at some point, we may be asking for the supervisors and the community to come together and say. In these particular areas, we want it to be less guy, less of a less safe share. I know all of those people are going to jump up and say. But as a community good, there are some things that a community dialogue has to take place and then the appropriate investment. Or the appropriate. Sort of ordinances get put in place in order to do this. For instance. You know, do you have a conversation and he's not here tonight, but do you have a conversation with V? Because V makes the decision on our roads. We make no decisions on roads. Okay, they're the ones who say. These roads, we think V that they should have this road. But is there an opportunity to say? That there are some places and I don't know. Are there some situations or some are there some hoped for things in our future? When in fact, we're going to be a little bit less gentle than letting the market determine it. Some of this feels like. This isn't where there's no sort of. I think we'd have a hard cost benefit. On some of these in this community to get to a yes on a number of these things. I just I just don't think the spirit's there for some of us.
Yeah, I agree. And I I think some things are going to actually have to be. Cash spent by our county to I've been involved in a number of projects where we had to build sidewalks, street trees. Parks, all of that stuff before. The development.
Yeah. So so one of the things that occurs to me too, particularly about five and six, is that there's a relationship there. Is that I think we need to start changing the way we look at density. Density has become a bad word in our community. And, you know, when. People come up and they speak about a a housing development that's being built next to them, they say, oh, there's too much density. People are associating a density of people. With a loss of service. And so I think we need to change the way we think about density and think about a density of service. Not just a density of people. And so if we can think of our neighborhoods, if you could say. Well, there's going to be more people here, but there's going to be more stormwater treatment. There's going to be more access to grocery stores. There's going to be more places to walk. There's going to be. More services. I think people would want to live in those those places. And I think we would be more acceptable, this place being next door. But we've associated that word density with just a strictly a density of people. And and that's a problem.
I I would also shape and that I've also heard in our community that density has a a person type. Though I want to be real careful that we don't just sweep that under the rug. There's been a great deal. I will. I will refer to a project that we saw last year. That a group of individuals came forward and said, we don't want that project there. Because it's going to bring these kinds of people to that project. That is the narrative that we hear around a lot of density. I think we're going to hear some of that narrative tonight, in fact. Or at least some of the, at least some of the, at least some of the letters that came over to us over the last week was had that under that undertone to it. We don't want those people here. And this project that I'm sort of harkening back to. When I asked the developer how much an apartment was going to cost there. They were two thousand dollars a month. I hate to say something, but somebody who can afford to pay two thousand dollars a month in an apartment, in a one or a two bedroom, or one in a den or one in what's like, it was like, not, you know, it was like one in a den or something like that. That person is not one of those persons who I would be afraid to live next to. I don't, I just, I just don't, I so I want to just sort of give to you, Lonnie, a little bit of. Some of the stuff we've heard has not been about a fear of of has been. Couch in what you just so eloquently said. But then if you sort of scratch on a little bit and ask him, so what is it that you think you're you're losing? It really comes down to we don't want those people here.
The irony of what I've seen in Croze though. Is from my time growing up there. Croze has become way more dense. But. It's become. Way less diverse. And so we've got density, but we lost diversity. We lost that great diversity that I grew up with. I look at my high school yearbook and the people that were in my high school yearbook and compare it to the people in Old Trail. And they don't look the same.
Did I? Offer a couple thoughts? I know we're almost out of time, so I'll do it. I'll speak quickly. One is, I think, I, you know, just thinking about your comments about the services matching with the density, et cetera. And I think it's be interesting as this all sort of broadens and we understand a little bit more. You know, what is the perception versus what is the reality, right? So I think a lot, and it, you know, very much depends on the location. It depends on the person, a lot of things. And what they're seeing as a service that they want that they don't have because things got denser. I think you can ask the same question in there are situations where density brings additional services that people actually do.
Transportation.
Exactly.
So there's less cars on the road.
That's right. And I think that just underscores the need to continue to think about. Master planning, right? And how do you engage the community in a in a master plan that they can as many as possible have buy in? To that includes services as well as density. And so they can see that as things are coming online, density is being added. Oh, well, there is accommodation for services in the master plan. Second thing is just thinking about the market and your comments. I think those were great comments. I. I would just, and you guys will do this, but just encourage, you know, a focus on a flexibility because obviously the market is all over the place. Right now, light industrial is like, you know, we need more light industrial capacity. Ten years from now, it might be something different, but I just think as we're thinking through, you know, to forty forty to twenty forty four, not forty forty four, it's a little further out, but. You know, thinking about that timeframe, there are going to be so many ups and downs in the market, trying to be as flexible as possible is important. And then the last thing is a question in terms of process. The next public engagement is a community roundtable, I think, coming up. How will those be structured? Do you know yet?
It's a good question. We are still working on planning for that, but we anticipate having both in person and virtual options and. If enough people, you know, sign up and attend, breaking up into smaller groups to having more discussion as well.
So I guess my question is, will they be themed or not? I'm just curious, or will it be sort of across all themes?
It's something we've been discussing. Both ways. I haven't made a an actual decision yet. I see positives of both sides of that, you know, a certain theme. Brings a particular interest group, but then you don't get the diversity of viewpoints to kind of play off each other as much. So there there's. Pros and cons of both. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, I think we need to just go to next steps. They're just begging for one more.
Inspired me. Can we go back to the to the? So there was, it was. Buries comment of five and six being being. So connected. I I would like to to challenge you to to actually. Think beyond the status quo, which is what I read here. Infrastructure needs to keep up.
Right.
Well, I challenge you to think about infrastructure needs to enable. Growth.
Where you want and how you want.
And open up the opportunity to strategic density. Not keep up because we never keep up. We're always going to be the same thing. Our schools are always going to be overcrowded. And. Our traffic is going to be an issue because. As soon as you can build. You could densify, you densify. And then everything follows. So let's try to flip that narrative and let's talk about enabling growth. Through our infrastructure.
Yeah, and that was kind of long, long lines of last comment I wanted to make. And then we should whatever the next steps are real quick, but. I think we need to, as you go through this whole process, keep questioning, what are the things in here that? We think the market could provide if we enable it versus the things that we have to do. Oh, because that's too often in this county, I feel like I see. There was talk about moving the courthouses and all this big development plans. If you recall several years ago. And what that was going to generate and how it's going to be public, private partnerships and blah, blah, blah. Everything would be paid for by magic. Private partnerships. That and that didn't happen. We're looking for Rial Road to redevelop with the form based code. I've got a lot of vision for that, but we're not really. Let's check back on that in ten years and see how that did. I just think that there are a lot of things that they that will require ours to actually invest in them. To get what we want to your point. And I'd like you to also throughout all these things, think about connectivity. Whether it's people moving. Bikes moving. Birds moving, whatever. I I think that because we keep. Putting things in little spots that people can't access. So next steps real quick, is there? We do that in two minutes?
Yes, sure. So the next step would be to go out to public engagement. With these common themes, then come back to you in September. For a work session on this draft vision for growth and resilience. That will then go to the board with your comments and input on it.
And chair, will it be longer than an hour?
Yes, that's something we're going to bring up tonight under other business is the idea of making these sessions longer. I believe they need to be at least two hours. I've had some suggestions that maybe they could be in ninety minutes. I don't know. So we'll. I. We'll talk about that tonight under other business about schedules. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I'm going to end this work session of the Alamo County Planning Commission and we'll reconvene promptly at six. Yes, not not six oh three.